Good evening. We'll call this work session of the common council to order. May we have roll call, please?
Mayor Gates.
Here.
Vice Mayor Miles.
Here.
Councilmember Kress.
Here.
Councilmember Lingenfelter.
Here.
Councilmember Scott Staley is excused.
Excused.
Councilmember Wade.
Here.
Councilmember Yocum.
Copy, 2018.
We have a call.
All work session items listed are for discussion only. No action can or will be taken. The primary purpose of the work session meetings is to provide the city council with the opportunity for in-depth discussion and study of specific subjects. Public comment is not provided for on the agenda and may be made only as approved by the consensus of the council. In appropriate circumstances, a brief presentation may be permitted by a member of the public or another interested party on an agenda item if invited by the mayor or city manager to do so. The mayor may limit or end the term for such presentations. First item on our work session agenda is airport operations options. I'll turn it over to Mr. Bacon.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor Gates, members of council. This first item is to give staff a sense of direction about your preferences in organizing the airport should the present litigation end in the city's favor. As I'm sure all of you are aware, there are really only two options for the operation of an airport. One is by an authority. And besides the local one here, Seattle Airport is done by an authority. The other one is as an aviation department of the city government. Phoenix uses that model. Some other communities around the state, I'm sure, use that as well. It's staff's understanding that between those two options, that the council prefers us to proceed going along the lines of a municipal department. And so if that's correct, doing what Councilmember Yocum just did non-verbally from the rest of you will get us through the first item very succinctly. We just don't want to be wrong in a very basic assumption. So if, in fact, the municipally managed department is your preference, let us know that and we're off to develop the implementation plans for that alternative.
I do believe that has been the will of the council.
Pretty sure it was. I just wanted to make sure before we went a different direction and you said, oh, that's not the way we were intending to go. So...
Is there any value, though, at maybe looking at a couple of examples of some city-operated versus maybe an effective authority?
I think there's value in looking at different approaches that a municipal department goes about operating the airport. And that's something we would try to prepare staff work for, y'know? I just don't know the way to deal with the essential nature of an authority, which is that it's an independent entity.
Yeah.
And it seems to me that there's been enough conversation and effort over the last six months that the direction from a person who's been here all of four weeks seemed pretty clear, but I wanted to make sure I was accurate in that before we went any further.
I think so.
You know, I would wholeheartedly support a city department, and really for three primary reasons. The first reason would be, you know, with the city department, we can really guarantee that 100% of the proceeds are reinvested out there. The second reason would be that we have direct control over the accreditations, the certifications, the education that the staff would be required to possess. And the third, and probably the most important, would be that with the city department, the citizens actually own the asset, become directly, that they have direct control over it. And it's easier to make course corrections.
Any other comments? You're good.
My personal preference, obviously, I'd just like to indicate that I would like to see an in-house manager reporting to the city manager, a department head.
Right.
With a possible advisory committee or commission, much like transit advisory, which advises for the municipal bus route or cart. And for the reasons of maintaining maximum control and having everything in-house where we have complete oversight and control of the banking so that we do not have to request cooperation from an outside entity. We see recently what a failed experiment that turned out to be.
Okay. Anybody else?
My personal preference.
Okay.
I do believe that's been the will of the council.
Yeah, Carl and I are clear on how we should go forward on that. The next item is the city website redesign. And I've asked Joe to give a brief presentation on this. And by way of background to this item, I considered a important marketing tool for the city. And so that's why it was on my list of things that needed attention. I have a presentation in about a month on economic development. And so a website that pays attention to the marketing is important. The other thing is that I think we're in a next generation, if you will, of websites that are more like a Google page. So navigation is at a premium. And so if the site is difficult to navigate, that's not a good thing. And then the third is to do a better job visually. And if I haven't stolen all of Joe's presentation, it was probably an oversight.
I could just move ahead to the questions slide now.
There you go. So here's Joe.
So, Happy New Year. The main objectives of this project are going to be naturally to update the website's appearance and functionality. But I don't think we've been very good in keeping the data updated and refreshed, too. That's been a real issue in the past. So we want to stress that as we go forward. And as the city manager just said, a marketing tool for visitors, residents, and businesses. And he also mentioned the Google format, a more photographic or photogenic homepage, if you will, with a search bar and a minimal number of headings. The process, as you see, that we're going to be going through is we'll be responsible for getting all the departments to get their ads, deletes, updates, everything together initially. We'll test the new website, present it, the new website to the council, have you look it over, and then implementation as the final process. Our timeline, as you can see, we've already had a meeting December 21st. And the scheduled meeting for the work session, hopefully for a completed or mostly completed project, is May 1st. And we're targeting June 1st as full implementation and unveiling of the new site. These are the people on the advisory group. Sidney and Annie from the clerk's office, Sergeant Coonett from the police department, Assistant Chief Eaton from the fire department, someone from engineering, Phil Allred, Sean Deloki from human resources, Christina Essig from Public Works, and Joel Hardy from us at Information Systems. This is an initial site. We kind of use this as our beginning guideline and kind of a direction we want to go. This is Glenview, Illinois. I believe the city manager had mentioned to me that this was an award-winning website. And you can see what we want to do is make it more visual, as we've discussed in the past, with minimal clutter on the main page. So we want it to be clean on the front page without having to drill down too many times as you go through the website. But this is the type of view we're looking for. And then I have some slides of the type of things we want to put in. The landscape around Kingman, we've got world-class landscape and views that we could put on it. Some of the activities that we have occasionally, we can put on the sliding view, the fun run, and maybe highlight a few of the bigger employers around town and things like that for the business side. So that was just a quick overview. I don't know if you have any questions?
Madam Mayor, I've got a couple of questions. Will, for instance, let's say HR has a new job opening. Will they be able to have access to the website to post the new job opening? Or will that still all have to go through IT?
Thank you for asking that question, because one of the main things that we want to do is give each department the ability to update their own websites. And I think taking that responsibility and that ownership and giving it to the department will help keep the information updated.
My next question is on your advisory committee. I would certainly like to see someone from the public that accesses our website frequently be on that advisory committee. In addition to that, Josh Noble, who seems to do a lot of marketing for tourism in Kingman, I noticed that he is not on the advisory committee. And that's just comments.
Mm-hmm. Sure. Thank you.
Joe, if I might follow up with that as to what Councilmember Kress just said. I always kind of, I think we've talked about this before, I've looked at the city's website as more of an internal tool. And I think this is a council that's very much interested in seeing this as our portal to the world and back.
Right. A whole different direction.
Yeah, the marketing, the accessibility, it's got to be a lot more user-friendly. So I appreciate these suggestions. And I also concur that we should probably have someone not on staff engaged in this process as well, if that's okay.
I just comment briefly on two things. The website advisory group that Joe just identified, those people are primarily about content, getting the out-of-date stuff off, putting current stuff on. And so we may have mislabeled them in terms of their actual function, but that's what their primary purpose is. The second is that as this develops, so we're like end of April, mid-May, I would hope that the project's far enough along that we can actually go out and test it on groups to see what they think. Because if the end user doesn't like it, we didn't get the job done. And so that's why Joe gave you the timeline he gave you in the June 1st implementation, because we anticipate that there's essentially a focus group of users to find that out. And for what it's worth, I was that user group when I was looking at the opportunity to serve as your interim manager. And so a lot of the thoughts that the staff has talked about came as a result of me being unfamiliar with Kingman and relying on different people's websites, including the city. So we would absolutely imagine, if you will, an external focus group as part of this process.
Thank you. That's good. Other comments on this item?
I just want to mention that I really like the fact that on the home screen you can access a lot of information, a lot of different types of information. I think that's critical because people need to scroll or click several times to find out what they're looking for. So I really think this looks like a good model. And I really like the idea of the focus groups and having a number of people. Beta-tested.
Pretty much, yeah.
If you've got something to show.
Exactly.
You want your microphone?
Okay.
Sorry. Now you could probably hear me.
I could hear you, but...
Sorry. Is that it on this item?
Thank you very much. The next item is the future work session calendar that we brought up two weeks ago and decided that we would do a work session on the topics. There's a document that you have as part of the packet called 122217 Draft that takes future work session topics from next meeting, two weeks from now, out through the first meeting in July. And what I did in creating that was move some topics around based on where I thought the conversation was going to take us tonight. And I also prepared a little background sheet, for lack of a better phrase, that provides additional information about each of the topics so that you'd have a better idea. Because a lot of the discussion that was going on two weeks ago, you remember, was what's this mean? You know, how does this work? And so those are the differences between what you saw two weeks ago and tonight. The topics have been rearranged to, I think, give a better fit of where the council's interests are topically. And second, I tried to give each of you a background of what those topics meant. And so that's what the item is. If there are thoughts about changing the dates that certain topics are shown, please let me know. And we'd be glad to modify them, subject to your approval. And then the idea of getting a business meeting tonight, that whatever we wound up talking about here is the one that you approved is to go forward so we can kind of get things started on the calendar. So that's the item. Any comments or questions about the calendar?
I had a quick question. The items that are currently on the draft.
Yeah.
They don't, they don't tell us who, if there's somebody who's supporting these specific things, or which council member's putting this on, which makes me kind of nervous if somebody feels that they can take it off. Is there, is there a way to like, I mean, with the ones that are already on there, obviously if we were going to add some things, you know, we would be the sponsor of the newly added items. Is there a way to kind of determine how one of those gets moved to another
Yeah.
area? Or if someone is already sponsoring that one? Because I know the items we put on there, only the council member who put it on there can remove it.
Yeah, so the part of your question that I would probably challenge is I don't see these items coming off that are on here.
Okay.
I see all of them being addressed.
Okay.
The only question is what order are we going to address the topics? So I'll give you, for instance, Economic Development Organization for the 6th of February on here. I don't know who the sponsor of that is, other than maybe the eight of us.
Okay.
Right? But it was clear to me that I'm ready to make a presentation to the council about what we're going to do on economic development, and we need to get started. And so I think it was originally in April, something like that. I don't have my original draft with me. So we just moved that up to the first meeting in February because I thought it was a shared interest. And it fit better in February than it did waiting until March, April, whenever. So I don't, I just struggle with the notion that there's anything on this list that's coming off.
Okay.
And so I absolutely agree with you that going forward, right, everybody knows who it is.
Right.
But it would still be on there. I mean, the whole point of having it on is to get staff work in motion to start doing the work. So this is not a, if we got time, you know, we'll figure out how to get staff committed to us. This becomes the direction that staff gets about what to do and when to have it ready. And so that's why it's such a big tool to me, as the manager here, to be able to provide the direction and the accountability to staff. And so that's the second part. And the third is I didn't identify these topics by the individual council member who suggested it. And so I couldn't do that tonight, just going through either. I just, what I did was say, what are the topics that this council is interested in and need attention in a work session? And that's how come, that's how we got the list. And that's how come even in spite of this list, we're still going to do other work sessions. You've got a lot on your plates. Sorry, I feel like I lobbied you there with the time, but it's just, it's important to me that the council, and the community for that matter, understands what I'm trying to do with this. It's a very important planning tool.
Maybe we need to explain the difference, or talk about the difference between workshop, work session items, that's for discussion only, versus agenda items, which are for action.
Right.
So this is really just a precursor to seeing if there's interest from the council, number one, and then providing the staff information so that would enable us to make informed decisions when, if and when it becomes an action item.
That's exactly right. That's a really good point, Mayor.
So are we clear on that, on that item?
Yep.
Okay. And any other, want to talk about additions or suggestions to this calendar?
Madam Mayor, just to point out, this is a work session item. We are allowing under item, Agenda Item 10, for the regular business meeting, inclusions or requests for future work session items on the calendar.
Okay. Any comments on this, the calendar itself? Are everyone's good with this, with the format?
Yes.
Okay, and then we'll deal with specific topics later in the agenda. Thank you for pointing that out.
You're welcome.
I just want to make sure everybody else was fine with the topics as sequenced. Because if that's the case, then as Councilmember Yocum just said, that's the document you'll see in about an hour or an hour and a half when we get to Item 10 of the business meeting. It'll be...
I guess my only question would be on our very next meeting.
Yeah.
That looks heavy. Had a lot of content there. We're talking about three pretty significant items, but...
Yep.
Okay. But there is a reason that we're having them this soon because they need to be addressed. So that's good.
Yeah, there, to give you context, tonight there are five. Right?
Right.
And so how the staff presentation is done and how the conversation goes has a lot to do with how long the item takes. So even though it's substantive item, three or maybe an additional fourth to this agenda would work, in my opinion.
Thank you.
We, okay.
Any other comments or questions?
I think the list looks good. Thank you.
Thank you. The next one is the Gateway Arch. Greg has been going over the historical records on this project and is going to give us a brief presentation on what he's found out. If you remember, the last time we talked about this, there was discussion about alternative locations, including street, as well as placement on the street. And so here's Mr. Henry's presentation to you on the arch. Greg, go ahead.
Thank you, Jim. Good evening, Mayor and Council. As indicated, we discussed this last month at our December 5th meeting, and there was direction from the council to bring this forth at the work session tonight with some additional options for locating the arch, either on Beale or Andy Devine Avenue. So we've got five options we're going to present, and pros and cons for each, and some costs for those as well. So first slide here is just, you know, what are we talking about? General concept would be just to put an arch across the road, either to welcome or attract visitors to historic downtown Kingman. The concept on the bottom there was the original from Yescot Sign Company. The basic front says, "Welcome to historic Kingman," and then the backside said, "Thank you for visiting." The colors were kind of selected by our public town hall meeting that we had on April 26th of last year. General history, the first indication of an arch project that I was able to find was from the 2003 Wayfinding Study. Their recommendation was to locate it on Beale Street between Metcalf Park and Locomotive Park. And the idea was to attract visitors to historic downtown Beale Street, Beale Street being the main sales tax revenue generator for the city downtown. So based on that, there was some discussions through the chamber and some other meetings that I wasn't necessarily involved with, but was generally aware of. And as a result of those meetings, there was a city budget at $135,000 in our last fiscal year, which included $25,000 for designing the arch and $110,000 for construction. In December 2016, the city received almost $35,000 as a donation for construction from the ABC Group. And there was a donation agreement that included a deadline that the arch should be completed by June of 2019, June 30th of 2019. January last year, council hired Yescot Sign Company as a CM at Risk for design services. Their goal was, their task was to provide some concepts for an arch and present those to staff and the city council for ultimate selection and proceeding. That occurred, and then, you know, last month, there was additional direction, as we talked about. In our current budget, there's $110,000 for construction. The five designs that were presented on March 7th were reviewed by the public at the April 26th Town Hall. And the public was able to, I wouldn't say overwhelmingly, but there was more support for the option that was presented last month. The most support was for that option. So as far as some additional options, this slide just represents an overview of the five locations that I've selected. They're not numbered in any particular order. I just simply numbered them from west to east, one through five, one being located on Beale Street, close to the new Dollar General store there, fairly close to the actual I-40 interchange. Option two would be the location on Beale Street between the Ballfields and Locomotive Park that was generally recommended in the 2003 Wayfinding Study. Option three is on Andy Devine Avenue, kind of near the Locomotive Park, near the west end of the powerhouse property. Option four being more located on First Street, near the east end of the powerhouse property. Option four being more located on First Street, uh, near the east end of the powerhouse property. And option five, located across Andy Devine Avenue at, essentially at Third Avenue, at Third Street, I'm sorry. So with those, I'll get into a little more detail on some of the pros and cons for each option there. Option one, on Beale Street near the Dollar General store. Main pro is the proximity to I-40. I've heard, um, I've heard from people that, uh, you know, if people can come off the freeway, see the arch and be attracted to see and, and wanna come and see something further downtown, that, that, that's a pro. Um, I think there's more cons with this option than there are, than there would justify that pro. Uh, the, the number one being A dot jurisdiction, which would mean some additional time and permitting requirements that the city would have to go through in order to locate the arch there. Second con is spans five lanes, you know, and the, the whole idea there is the, the wider the span, the, the costs will, will increase. It's not on Route 66. And just in some of the preliminary investigation I've done, I, there's water lines located on either side, um, apparently looking underneath the sidewalks there on, on Beale Street. So that would be something that would have to be worked around and, and or relocated in order to locate the arch there. So option two, um, again, this is at Locomotive Park across Beale Street. Pros would be it invites, uh, traffic is generally noticed from the light there at Grandview and Beale and would invite, uh, visitors to, to come in, into Beale Street shopping areas. Uh, the, the concept was to, uh, even though Beale Street in this location is five lanes, the idea was to build some concrete curb bump outs to reduce the span length to three lanes and then, uh, stripe for additional parking. Another pro to this is it's currently under contract with Yescot Sign Company. Uh, and I list proximity to the park because we do have some events at the park as a pro and, and there are certainly, uh, people that, uh, congregate at the parks from time to time and would probably be interested in taking some pictures of the arch while they're there, I would think. But, um, I think it was mentioned last month as, uh, council wanted to look at possibly putting this on Andy Devine to, to help promote Route 66, so that's what I have listed that as a con there.
Mr. Henry?
Yes.
That, uh, option two was the original proposed location.
Yes, from the 2003 wayfinding study. Option three, Andy Devine at Locomotive Park. I like this 'cause it's, uh, it's on 66, spans three lanes, again, proximity to the park. Uh, the one I don't like is it's in the middle of kind of the curvature of Andy Devine Avenue here, so it would kind of detract from, uh, maybe the visibility of, of the arch as from, from traffic driving underneath it. Option four, uh, close to the powerhouse, there's a sizable parking lot there for, for people to park. It's on Route 66, again, spans with the new concrete median that's there for First Street, um, for pedestrians. It looks like there's room that we could fit an arch across that and span three lanes. However, I, my, my cons would be potential site issues with, uh, traffic turning movements and, uh, and the traffic turning out of the driveway in and out of the powerhouse there. So I wanted to list this as an option, um, and people have, uh, I know that, I've talked to some people who think it's, it's nice to have it this close to the powerhouse and possibly even could have some signage for the powerhouse, but I would be worried about, um, again, the, the site issues with the driveways there. Uh, option five, um, this would be kinda across from the city, what, the parking lot the city currently owns at Third Street, um, spanning, uh, five lanes, uh, it's on Route 66. It, it's close to, to Fourth Street and, and by, my, my reason for listing that as a con is, to me, Fourth Street is kind of a gateway into downtown as well for Andy Devine. There's certainly more traffic on Fourth than for Second or Third. It's close to the city parking lot. It does however span five lanes, so the, the cost to put it here, I do relatively like this location. However, the, the cost is gonna be a little bit higher because we're, we're spanning five lanes of traffic. Any questions so far on locations? Okay. Uh, the costs that I've listed here, these are pretty high level costs. They're, um, uh, there's some caveats. They, they, they would include lighting but exclude design costs. So we're ranging anywhere from, uh, 170 to, uh, quarter million dollars basically on, depending on the location. And there's a, based on some of the numbers that we got from Yescot and some of the other sign companies here in town, so. Design costs would generally be in the range of 10 to 15 percent. And there could be some other costs like, such as how far we need to run power to get power available to the sign and if there's other utilities that might be potential conflicts. Those are the type of things that would get flushed out in the design of the project. Some other considerations, um, what do we want the arch to say? I don't know, know that this would necessarily have to be worked out tonight or anytime soon, but sometime before, obviously, the arch would be constructed, we need to agree on, on what it's gonna say. The main thing I think would be where to locate it. That's, if we can come to consensus on that, that would, uh, provide staff, uh, perfect direction on where to go from here. Um, you know, some of the Andy Devine locations don't necessarily have that wayfinding concept of, uh, uh, bringing people in and bringing them over to Beale Street where the, where the restaurants and, uh, and the libations and, uh, you know, and the music is, so. And then, uh, according to that, uh, donation agreement, we do have a, a, a June 30th, 2019 deadline. I don't see this as an issue, uh, at this point, but it's something to, to note and, and make council aware of.
Well, we started this in 2003. It could be an issue.
In 2003, they, they thought we could build an arch for 60,000 too, so.
Right.
Um, that's essentially it. I, uh, I'd like to, hopefully, if we, if, if council has looked at these and has, uh, some idea or questions on, on location, that's, I think, would be a perfect direction to take tonight for staff.
May I ask, can I start with, was option four, you said you had concerns about, um, visibility or turns? Why is that, um, a greater distraction there than any, any of the other locations?
Well, the other locations don't, are farther away from driveways and street intersections. My concern would be having, uh, a column for the, uh, for the arch, um, conflicting with someone making a left turn here on, on First Street, uh, down to Andy Devine and if they couldn't see, uh, oncoming traffic.
I guess I'm, I'm looking, where it was located though, um, is essentially where people are going to turn, right-ish? But you'd actually then be looking at it long before you got to the turn. By the time you got there, you'd be underneath it.
Well, it's not necessarily just for traffic on Andy Devine, so it, a, a, a car making a left turn out of the powerhouse would need to see if there's traffic coming as well. So that, it's just a concern when, whenever we're getting close to an intersection, we don't want anything blocking what we call the site visibility for, for the driver to see additional vehicles coming.
Thank you very much. Other questions, comments?
I, I have, none of these options, we don't have the budget for any of these options, do we?
No, we have 110,000 in the current budget.
Okay. And, and I, I feel, I don't know that we should do an arch and, as always, I'm gonna be in the minority, and that's fine. But if we did do an arch, I don't know why we wouldn't do it where we would attract tourists, cars coming in off the freeway into downtown. From, from an economy standpoint, that's the only way it makes sense to me at all.
So which location are you referring to?
Whichever one would draw the most people in from the freeway into downtown. And it seems to me like that's the one by Dollar General or whatever that store is.
I don't know that I wanna see Welcome to Kingman Dollar Store.
I, I know, that's an awful way to refer to it. I know, I, I agree with that.
Well, I, I, I think that actually the wayfinding option two really thought that that would invite them to our sales tax stores, all located the best. And, and I tend to.
Option two looks good.
I tend to agree with you that we want to use it to, if we, if it's built, to attract people into historic downtown. Uh, and I know the, the concern has been that it's, doesn't say, it's not on Route 66, but now I'll throw my little twist. To me, downtown is the heart of Route 66 period, so, um, it doesn't cause me heartburn to say 66, heart of 66, even on Beale Street, because we're all, it's all part of that genre, if you will. So I don't think that's mutually exclusive.
Yeah.
And I went down that Andy Devine today and looked at all these sites and I thought, some of that is so confusing down there where the, where the streets divide and everything and even with, I, I think people are gonna look at where the arrows are telling them to go rather than at the sign. That was my concern, so.
What?
I think, when I, when I look at it, I think my, my decision is very closely tied to the cost because I'm very concerned that all of the options that we have right now, they all exceed our available budget. So if I had to choose right now, I'd probably choose one of the lesser cost options. And, and even then, you know, we're over budget. So what, what do we do?
Councilmember Lindman Felder, uh, a couple of weeks ago when we talked about this item, uh, Greg's presentation that night identified the need for a contingency transfer. That's, that's still how we would proceed with it. And, uh, given what you said and what Councilmember Crest said, um, I think that would, that would lean staff towards option two because we have more sunk cost in that option than we do any of the others, uh, which is another saying if we didn't, we can't get those dollars back, right? So, um, the, the short answer though to your question is it would be a contingency transfer.
Can I ask you a question to that? In your estimation, is that a prudent use of contingency funds? Sorry, did I put you on?
No, it's, uh, um, I, I don't ever remember having someone ask me, uh, about the use of contingency funds and prudent.
Well, so, so you understand where I'm coming from. I always define contingency as more emergency funding.
Yeah, so, so if that's your definition of contingency, right, then.
Personally, yeah.
Yeah, then you would have trouble supporting the idea of contingency. Uh, if your view, on the other hand, is similar to what Greg and Rob Owen, uh, encounter all the time in construction projects where there are changes in, in the construction scope and the final cost isn't the original cost, you know, those, those extra dollars, if you will, are contingent dollars. Um, and so I, I, I remember saying this when we talked about it last time. I think if you, if you want to do the arch project, then it's a reasonable use to, to use contingency to, to do that. Um, I wouldn't sit here and tell you it's, it's not prudent to do that or it is prudent to do that, but I think that's, that's a, a way of looking at operating contingency dollars is that over the, over the year, if you will, there are things that are going to happen that cause you to want to go ahead with the project, but you need to supplement the, the budgeted funding. And so, um, that's all I have to say.
Can I clarify, Mayor?
Greg.
Excuse me. May, may I just clarify, there is, um, it's my understanding with talking to Tina, there is a separate contingency for project, capital projects that is entirely separate from the general fund contingency. So that's what we would recommend using.
That's, that's helpful. Thank you very much. That's good information.
That, that kind of addresses my point. I was gonna ask, we're, we're about halfway through the current fiscal year. Are there other areas, other line items in the current budget that we could possibly reallocate that haven't been spent?
Well, I think when you, when you look at the year end, right, that, and all those accounts close out, the, and, and we're gonna go into this a little more in depth on Tuesday at the workshop, but Tina and I are confident that you'll have dollars over and above your spending available in, in those accounts.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Questions? Other questions of staff?
I just said, I just want, excuse me, just one comment. I, I have a tendency to agree with, with Jen and Vicky. I think that the option number two can not only, and am I on?
Yeah.
Uh, draw in people off the highway, but also, um, I, I don't see a problem with adding, you know, something to the effect of Route 66. I mean, it's right there in the, uh, it's correlated to some degree. But, um, I did have a question, and I don't know who to direct this question at, but I was wondering if there was an articulable correlation between, uh, wayfinding structures and some sort of, you know, financial benefit? I mean, in, in terms of like drawing people off of the highway compared to their, you know, some kind of financial or economic benefit to that? Do, do we know of any? I mean, in the wayfinding study, it did talk a little bit about those types of things, but is there some kinda?
Well, I think the benefit would be if you can attract them and, and not just attract them, but show them a reason to stay here longer. The longer they stay, there's more economic benefit. I, I don't know that I can put, pinpoint an exact answer to that specific question, you know, as an engineer, but, um, that's, there's probably some economic, uh, specialists out there that could, that could, uh, give you a better indication of that. But to me, it's just if we can attract them in and, and give them reasons. And I think there's some pretty good reasons on Beale Street to keep people there now. You know, there's, there's good food, there's entertainment, there's antique shops and all this of others. I don't, I, 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 I don't wanna, I don't leave anyone out, but there's, there's a whole lot of reasons for people to come downtown and courthouse is another.
Councilmember Lloyd, I may have said this before, when we were talking about the nature of the signage, but particularly the location that you identified, um, which is option two, I see that as much about place making as I do wayfinding. And, and so, um, what can be done to enhance the, the making of a downtown place goes to exactly what Mr. Henry just spoke to. And, um, I'm sure there's somebody who's done some interesting research on that, but I couldn't put my finger on it either tonight or in the next four or five days. But I, I just want the council to, to, to consider this as being as much about place making as it is about wayfinding. We do a great job, by the way, on wayfinding in this town. We've got some really good locations, sign locations on wayfinding. This is, this is one of the places where we're, we're looking at place making as well.
I do have a comment. As I thought about this, I thought about all the cities that I've been to where the historic downtown has this kind of sign, and I remember them. And it, and I think that, I thought, it really does make a place stand out as a, as a unique area. So I, I like that idea of the place, place making.
Other questions or comments? So are, you're not looking for direction? What are you looking for from us?
We're, and I, my sense of where you are as a group is that while there's some reluctance to do the project because of the difference between the budget authority and, and what it would take, that, uh, if we were going to do one, uh, your sense would be that we ought to pursue option two. And, uh, and so that being the case, we will prepare the necessary documents for consideration at a future council meeting, including how, uh, that difference is, uh, paid on, between the budget and the actual amount.
Has there been any consideration in using bed tax dollars?
Uh, I haven't talked to Tina about that, uh, but I will.
Just a question.
And, um, and I would, Greg, would you, uh, comment on when you would see this on the, uh, business meeting portion of the agenda?
I'd like to shoot for the, the next meeting in January, but that, it's gonna be dependent on our negotiations with Yescot Sign at this point, so hopefully we can get something.
Somewhere between two weeks and four weeks from tonight, you can expect this on your business meeting.
Thank you. And you will explore using those tourism dollars?
And I, we definitely talked to Tina about it.
Thank you very much.
And I don't wanna step out of turn, but, um, it seems like some of, some of the members on the council. the members on the council do like the idea of adding the Route sixty-six thing, even though it is in option two. Is there a way to sort of feel that out a little bit too?
Absolutely. Yeah, we'll talk to Yasko Sign about that.
Okay.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you very much.
Thank you. The next item in the, uh, work session is a presentation by Judge Singer on the municipal court community restitution program. And here's Judge Singer.
Before we begin, I would like you to please take a look at the time.
It's six twenty, so I've got forty minutes to talk about this.
No, 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 no. We just wanted to remind you that you're in, in the beginning of the meeting rather than at the end.
Right, yes, and I appreciate that.
No, you don't have forty minutes.
Right, and it's, um, I always know when I'm here, the meetings usually are going to go close to midnight. So, yeah, so I know I'm that jinx. But, um, but yeah, I, it sounds like I got my forty minutes, so let's get going. No, I, we're going to take a couple of minutes here. Um, good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Council. Um, I appreciate the opportunity to be here this evening and just wanted to share with y'all, and they're the yalls, again, I've been here from Oklahoma for two and a half years and I'm still doing my yalls, I'm sorry. But I just wanted to share with everybody about our new community restitution program that we have at the municipal court that, uh, started, I guess essentially yesterday, but we weren't open yesterday, so started today, that we're very excited about. I think it's, um, going to be a big plus for, um, not only for the court, but for the city as a whole. And just wanted to share, um, with everybody for a couple of minutes about what we're trying to do and, and get accomplished with this program. As I've, uh, observed in my time here being the, the judge and, and seeing, um, how we've been doing, uh, community restitution, AKA commu-, those who don't know, community service hours, with our defendants, our clients who've come before us, um, just realized that we need, um, probably some more structure and just wanted this to be more geared towards the benefit of the city. There's a strong push these days, um, for those who don't know, um, coming out of Phoenix with the, uh, the fair justice for all initiatives for the courts, that we want to be looking at alternatives to, you know, um, jailing and imprisoning people for failure to pay fines. It's kind of an outdated and antiquated concept and want to look for, you know, options and things, things like that to keep people out of jail, because it's a, it's a lose and lose proposition all the way around. They're in jail, you know, the, the court and the city are incurring, you know, all these jail costs and it's just, let's look at different options. And so I really wanted to fine tune our community restitution program, and I think the way that we, we've done this and structured this, again, not only is it a plus for, uh, the court, for the defendants, but for the city as a whole and for the other departments who have come on board and, and signed on to be a part of our program. So what we've done is that moving forward here, starting today, is if, um, we're, you know, we're allowing our defendants to, um, to convert their financial obligations to the court, the things that can be converted, some things statutorily and, um, that cannot be converted over, but the things that can be converted over, that we are, want them to be doing community, uh, service hours, community restitution hours. But I want it for the city. I mean, these, this is a city core. I, I don't want these hours and these things being done, you know, all over the place. I, I really want it geared and structured for the city. So what we've, uh, come up with is that when somebody elects to do this, either if they're going to have court ordered hours pursuant to a plea agreement, or if they're going to be converting their hours over if they just can't pay and they want to, um, do the hours, we want it done for either the city or for businesses for the city, nonprofit organizations for the city, or for, um, you know, like religious organizations for the city. So what we've come up with is this, is if you're going to be doing community restitution hours, is I want at least half of the hours done for departments for the city of Kingman. And we've got four departments who have signed on and agreed to take our, our people, and that would be, um, Parks and Rec, and Parks and Rec has, has always done that, and we're, we're appreciative of Mike and his group. But the other departments who've, uh, come on board with us are Public Works, the Fire Department, and the Tourism Department. And so again, want to, um, you know, just thank, uh, Rob over with the Public Works and Chief Rhodes of the Fire Department, and Josh Noble and his, uh, crew over at the Tourism Department. And so if somebody's going to be doing hours for us, again, half your hours have to be done for one of those four departments. Those are the four departments who agreed to come on board and, and, um, and take our people and everything. Again, we think it's a win-win. They're going to be, you know, not having to face, you know, a lot of these financial obligations, they'll be able to work them off. But also, it's going to be a win for the city of Kingman too, because it's going to be, you know, hopefully helping out these departments and maybe alleviate some, you know, some of their additional costs with, you know, workforce and manpower and things like that. So, um, hopefully this is, again, we're, we do a lot of things by trial and error. Hopefully this, uh, works out well. But, uh, again, I'm grateful that they've been, they've agreed to take on our, our people, and it gives our defendants, you know, additional options of where to do their hours at, but also hopefully it's going to benefit those departments and the city as a whole. And then, uh, when, for their other half of the hours, as I said, they can do the other half for the other departments as well, or like I said, uh, for any local religious group, or for any of the court approved, um, nonprofit agencies. And so what I've done is, um, that our court had traditionally had a list of, of, uh, some nonprofit organizations that would take our people. I got a list from the Justice Court, and so we've contacted all these organizations. And again, it's not, I know I've attached with, um, my presentation here, a list of the organizations. Again, I'm hoping to get the word out. I think I've counted about twenty-four here, or nonprofits who are on the court approved list. It's, that's not an, you know, exhaustive list if there's other nonprofits in the city of Kingman. Again, I, I just want to keep hammering that home. A, a nonprofit organization in the city of Kingman, um, who wants to be added to our list will be happy to vet them and make sure that we dot our i's, cross our t's, and we can add them to the list too. So, um, we're excited about this. We've had kind of some issues in the past about, uh, forged hours and just, you know, some organizations we just didn't know about, and that, this kind of narrows it down, gets it all kind of tailored, and, and I think it's going to be good for everybody. So that's what we're doing, um, at Kingman, the Kingman Municipal Court. And again, I'm, um, very proud of this new program that we've got going. And again, I'm just grateful to my fellow department heads who have signed on to, uh, take our people as well. So I didn't know if anybody has any questions or thoughts or concerns or?
I just want to say thank you. I think this is really amazing. It's very innovative. You're really offering people, um, an opportunity to improve their circumstances rather than incarcerate them because of financial need. I thank you for doing that, and it's, it's a great savings to the city as well as a real opportunity to give some people a second chance. So thank you for that. Other questions?
I would have just a couple of questions. I think it's, it sounds like a great program. Just for the public that's in attendance, this is for obviously nonviolent people for just fines that they want to work off. Who is this going to be applying to?
Yeah, I mean, of course, it's a municipal court, so we're just dealing with misdemeanors.
Right, right, right.
So, um, you know, pretty much all my defendants who come through the court, again, you know, we, we don't, we don't have felons and we don't have, you know, real serious, uh, when I say serious, yeah, there's serious offenses, but, you know, they're, they're still misdemeanors. So, um, and again, it's for our adults as well as for our, our juveniles too, because, you know, we have juvenile, uh, juveniles who come through the court system too. So it's for, for them, and, um, again, you know, it's just trying to think a little bit outside the box here about, you know, yeah, it's easy to just lock people up for failing to pay, but let's look at alternatives here. I mean, it just, it, it does nobody any good to lock people up for failing to pay. Doesn't do the court any good, doesn't do the defense any good, doesn't do the city any good, doesn't do anybody any good. Let's look at alternatives that are going to benefit us all.
So as an example, um, in the past, the city has had a weed problem. Would they, would they be able to help pull weeds or to paint or?
Oh, I thought you were talking about with the medical marijuana. Okay.
Oh, this is Arizona, not California.
Yeah, right, yeah, right, okay. Yeah, right, I mean, I think that was, um, I know speaking to Josh Noble with the Tourism Department, he was kind of talking about that and about, um, you know, he, he thought it'd be a great idea to have a lot of people, a lot of our people come over and help, you know, pull weeds and things like that. And so of course, you know, either through them or, you know, through Public Works and things like that, sure, get out there and help beautify the city of Kingman. So, um, again, we're, I think it's a benefit to the defendants, but I, I think it's going to be a big plus to the city too, as we really push in this direction.
Thank you, Judge.
Would you kindly remind everyone what it costs to incarcerate someone? I know there's an initial intake fee and then what is it daily? So I mean, look at the savings that this could represent.
Sure. I mean, when you incarcerate somebody, our, our one day cost, first of all, there's a sixty dollar a day process, not sixty dollar a day, sixty dollar processing fee. And then the daily fee, uh, is seventy-one dollars and thirty-nine cents. So right off the bat, you're in jail one day, a hundred and thirty-one dollars and thirty-nine cents, then you just go seventy-one dollars and thirty-nine cents per day after that. Adds up.
It certainly does. Thank you.
And, um, it, you know, again, it, it doesn't, it doesn't do any of us any good. It doesn't the defendants any good. I mean, I mean, I, you know, we still want to hold their feet to the fire and, you know, make sure people are responsible and, you know, make sure that, you know, you have these obligations and you need to follow through on them, but there's other ways that, that they can do that, because, um, you know, not everybody's made of money, and so, uh, we need to look at different options.
Thank you. Councilmember Kress and then Vice Mayor?
Judge Singer, it, would it, um, strictly be within the city limits? And the reason I ask that is the food bank is one block outside of the city limits on the other side of Northern Avenue.
Right, and I, the food bank is somebody who's, you know, there's some, I think it was sort of got grandfathered on the list here and everything, and the food bank has always been, um, even before I came, uh, agency that we used at Kingman Municipal, and so they'll continue to be, be used. I mean, yeah, the food bank's a popular place for, um, people to do their hours, either through the municipal court or the justice court. So, yeah, food banks are, you know?
Thank you. Vice Mayor?
Well, I, I add my thanks to, as everyone else, for this program. I, I like this contract, because it appears that you're putting the responsibility on the individual to contact our departments and create the contract with them.
Right.
And so toward that, I really want to thank each one of these departments, because it's not, there's no free lunch, and the departments are going to take on supervisory responsibility. And that's, I, I really hats off, because it does serve the Kingman, Kingman well, it serves these people well, and so I'm all for it. But I appreciate the contract requiring them to do the footwork and, and try to get this set up, and, uh, so well done.
Thank you. Yeah, it's, you know, they got to take responsibility. It's like I tell them all the time in the courtroom, you got to meet me halfway, and you got to at least, you know, show an effort and things like that. Got to meet me halfway and we'll, we'll work with you.
Did you have a comment? Any other questions or comments? Again, thank you, well, you've got, you've got a few more minutes.
Yeah, I've got about, yeah, uh, about twenty-five more minutes. Would you like to talk about Nebraska football or?
Keep in mind, we are talking about your term, like later in the agenda, I'm just kidding.
That's, yeah, that's later in the agenda.
Yeah, all right, well, thank you all.
Well, thank you so much. It's appreciated. Okay.
That completes the, uh, work session, and, uh, thanks to the, uh, goal of, uh, not taking all the time remaining, uh, we are in recess until seven o'clock.
Okay, entertain a motion?
We, to recess until seven, business meeting.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed?
Quick.
Before it runs.
All right.
I have an hour.
Better turn that thing off.
This thing.
Before it runs.
All right.
I have an hour.
Better turn that thing off.
This thing.
Before it runs.
Thank you.
We're to recess until seven business meeting.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed?
Okay.
Okay.
That completes the work session. And thanks to the goal of not taking all the time remaining, we are in recess until seven o'clock.
Okay. Entertain a motion?
We're to recess until seven business meeting. I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed?
Quick.
I have an hour.
Better turn that thing off.
This thing.
Before it runs.
Thank you.
It's not in the forefront of public consciousness.
We're gonna start.
We're gonna start, yeah.
Good evening. We'll call this regular meeting of the common council to order. May we have roll call, please?
Mayor Gates.
Here.
Vice Mayor Miles.
Here.
Councilmember Kress.
Here.
Councilmember Lingenfelter.
Here.
Councilmember Scott Staley.
Excuse.
We're gonna start.
We're gonna start, yeah.
Good evening. We'll call this regular meeting of the common council to order. May we have roll call, please?
Mayor Gates.
Here.
Vice Mayor Miles.
Here.
Councilmember Chris.
Here.
Councilmember Lingenfelter.
Here.
Councilmember Scott Staley.
Excuse.
Councilmember Wade.
Here.
Councilmember Bioka.
Happy 2018.
Thank you very much. Our invicator was unable to attend this evening. If you would kindly join me for a moment of silence, followed by the pledge of allegiance. Please bow your heads. Thank you. Please join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Please be seated. First item on the agenda is the approval of minutes. Item 1A, work session meeting minutes of July 27, 2017. Any corrections or additions? Hearing none, all in favor, I'll entertain a motion to approve the minutes of July 27, 2017. So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Item 1B, special meeting minutes of August 17, 2017. I'll entertain a motion to approve if there's no corrections or additions. So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Item 1C, work session meeting minutes of September 27, 2017. Any discussion? Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion to approve.
So moved.
Second.
Any, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Finally, item 1D, regular meeting minutes of December 19, 2017. Any corrections or additions? Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion to approve. So, so moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Item 2, appointments. Item 2A, appointment to Planning and Zoning Commission. Planning and Zoning Commission met on December 12, 2017, and reviewed two current boards and commission applications for Mike Blair and Charmaine Keith. The commission felt that both candidates were worthy of council consideration. The Planning and Zoning Commission voted seven to zero to recommend that the city council choose one of the applicants to serve a three-year term ending on December 31, 2020. Either of the applicants in the audience this evening wish to address the council? If you'd kindly approach the podium?
Okay. Well, good evening, council. My name is Charmaine Keith. I'm a real estate broker with RE/MAX Preferred Professionals. As a real estate professional for, I've been a real estate professional for close to 16 years. I've assisted in commercial, residential, and land sales, as well as residential development. I own commercial storage and rental homes in Kingman, so I'm a business owner and very interested in making, making Kingman an even greater place to be. So, a little nervous. I do, I do speaking every week, but it doesn't help, public speaking. I've assisted businesses in the rezone process. I've stood before commission expressing my concerns regarding a rezone request. So I do have the experience of being on this side of the podium. I understand the importance of taking all things in consideration, and that with every action, there is a reaction. I listen to the Kingman residents on a daily basis, people coming in and residents coming in and coming out, and listen to their concerns, the things that they would like Kingman to achieve, and change and stuff. And so I do have a great insight in, in a daily basis of talking with them and, and just listening to what they would like to see improve, and the things that they love about Kingman already. So I personally have been here since 2001, and I love Kingman. So if, if they ever talk negative or anything, I just say, "You're talking to the wrong person," because I love everything about Kingman, for the most part. And so in, in this, I would just like to say, if it is the council's desire to allow me to serve on the commission, I would be honored, and I thank you for your consideration, and if you have any questions, I can answer them the best I can.
Thank you. Any questions of the applicant?
I, I do have a question, or maybe a comment. Ms. Keith, it could be that you would have to recuse yourself relatively often, and then that leaves a six-member commission, and, and that, that is my only concern about you joining the Planning and Zoning Commission.
I understand. Thank you.
But I do appreciate your interest.
That it?
Thank you.
The recusal would only be, that would be fairly limited, though, to, to properties that you had a vested interest in.
Correct. It would have to be something that she has some interest in, or a client has an interest in.
Right. And that, that happens all the time. I mean, not, you know, that would happen with any, any form. I mean, we, if we have any vested interest or anything in real estate in our contracts, we, we have to disclose everything or back out. I deal with foreclosures and stuff, and, and we cannot buy anything that, that we represent. And so I understand that, but I do also understand that I want to be part of helping everyone make, you know, make Kingman a great place to be, you know, and I, I think that I, I want to serve somewhere to help our city.
We thank you for your willingness. Are there any other questions of the applicant? Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Mr. Blair.
Good evening, Mayor. Councilmembers, my name is Mike Blair. I believe I can really benefit this commission, having been on it before, having worked on the 2020 plan. We spent over two and a half years getting that going in the past with all our help and everything, and staff's help. I worked again on the update on the 2030, and everything's in there. We tried to benefit the city, and so far, what I've seen, what we've done has really been beneficial. Having been here for 28 years, I've seen a lot of changes. A lot of them are beneficial. I'd like to keep going in the same direction.
Thank you. Any questions of the applicant? Thank you very much. Anyone else wish to address the council on this? Seeing none, entertain a motion to make an appointment to the Planning and Zoning Commission for a term expiring December 31, 2020.
I appreciate both candidates throwing their hat in the ring for this important commission. I would make a motion to appoint Charmaine Keith to the Planning and Zoning Commission to serve a term on Planning and Zoning Commission, ending on December 31 of 2020.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
Yes. I, I've been the liaison this past year, and as such, I saw a lot of the commission commissioners leave this year, and we have appointed a number of P&amp;Z people over the past, I don't know, two years, I guess, but many of them really are new to the commission, in a sense. And as I thought about this, and we have been appointing a lot of people who are young and willing to serve, and I really appreciate that, but at this point, especially with P&amp;Z, my sense is that there needs to be a, a knowledge base about our general plan, about where it came from, where, where, where to link it to the decisions that are being made and recommended in P&amp;Z. So for that reason, I really am leaning toward going to someone who has that historical knowledge base and was, has worked to create those plans in the past. We, we did appoint one other who has that knowledge, but at this point, I think it couldn't hurt to have that, that carried on.
Okay. Any further discussion?
Yeah, I, I recognize, and it certainly has, there's weight behind that. I would hope that the workshop that we're going to be holding with all the commissioners would do a sufficient job with educating all of our commissioners on the specific sections of our general plan that are applicable to that commission, and also, I think we talked about setting some goals for each one of those commissions. So hopefully, it would bring all of our commissioners, no matter how long they've served, up to speed and at, and up to the same level.
Thank you. Any other comments? We have a motion and a second on the floor. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
We don't need to count. You got that? Is that clear? Okay. Thank you both for your willingness to serve. Moving on to item B, appointment to the Clean City Commission. The terms of commission members Sarah Ferry and Joe Longoria ended on December 31, 2017. Clean City Commission met on December 21, 2017, and recommended to the reappointment of Sarah Ferry to serve on the Clean City Commission. Joe Longoria previously indicated he was not interested in being reappointed. There are no other applications from those interested in serving in, on the CCC at this time. Staff recommends reappointing Sarah Ferry to serve a term on the Clean City Commission, ending on December 31, 2020. Is Ms. Ferry in the audience this evening?
Madam Mayor.
Yes.
Ms. Ferry is not. I'm in receipt of communication from her indicating that she is unable to attend this evening's meeting, and has a brief statement, quote, "I apologize for missing this meeting. I would be honored to officially serve on the Clean City Commission. I am a lifelong champion for our hometown. I am passionate about education, sustainability, recycling, litter prevention, and Kingman area beautification. I know that there is always room for improvement and more to learn. I look forward to the positive work that we can do with the Clean City Commission. I thank you for your consideration," end quote.
Thank you. Anyone wish to address the council on this item? Okay. While we have one applicant that has expressed interest in being reappointed, I'll entertain a motion.
I would move that we follow the commission's recommendation and accept Ms. Ferry as the appointee to the Clean City Commission vacancy or for reappointment.
I'll second that.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Moving on to item 3, awards recognition. Item 3A, employee recognition. In appreciation of their hard work, dedication, and loyalty, the mayor and council would like to recognize employees who have reached years of service milestones, beginning at five years of service and continuing at each five-year interval. In addition, mayor and council would like to congratulate the following retirees on their retirement. Bradley Abraham, who retired from the fire department on November 7, 2017, with over 27 years of outstanding service, and Robert Canthak, who retired from the Parks Recreation Department on December 31, 2017, with over 28 years of outstanding service. I have some certificates to present.
Rich Ruckles? Congratulations, 25 years of service. Dennis Gadd? Robert Canthak, retired 28 years.
Okay. Item 3B, we have a presentation this evening by first Lego League team, 3862 and 31707 ETF. The Kingman Academy of Learning FLL teams will present their innovative solutions to a real-world problem before their competition in Tempe in a few weeks. These students are required to present at various groups as part of their qualifications for competition. Good evening.
Good evening. Thank you for having us here. I apologize for not making it last time. There was a miscommunication on my part, but these kids are fantastic. And then, just to give a little background, the project this year is, the name is Hydrodynamics, so they had to research a human water problem, and so this is the result of their hard work this season.
This song goes out to you, City Councilmember.
The weather forecast predicts rainstorm today. Hey, go on, go on, the sugar.
When excess rainwater enters into a sewer system, the increased volume upsets the delta balance of microbes in the treatment process. To fix this, wastewater treatment plant workers dump in hundreds of pounds of sugar to feed the microbes and bounce the treatment process again.
Sometimes then to truck in loads of slurry from other wastewater treatment plants to further imbalance the microbes again. This costs more money because you're treating a larger volume of water.
We added sugar earlier this year, and it's been waiting so long. Our plant is overflowing. We'll have to discharge and treat it once more. It's a wash. We'll have to report this incident to the Arizona Department. We'll have to call them. That won't make them happy.
An overloaded treatment plant causes the plant to exceed capacity sooner. Then they have to spend money while digging another wastewater treatment plant.
We heard about this problem from City of Kew wastewater treatment plant superintendent Kealan Yarborough. Supermole covers let rainwater into the sewer system. Typical amount of inflow from one manhole cover is .2 to 5 gallons per minute.
This is a current solution to keep rainwater out of the sewer. These manhole inserts have an inflow rate of 10 gallons in 25 hours, or 7 thousandths of a gallon per minute.
That's not good enough. It could still be better. There has to be a fatoid present rainwater in the drain system.
Your manhole cover.
Hello. We are F.R.A. 3862. I think we can help you.
What are your plans?
Water pipe at least five meters. This is a low cost, but this is expensive.
Compare what old and current sewers have used. They will steadily control the flow of manhole cover to a wide level.
I have an idea. We can patch a balloon to the top stem. When gas builds up, people will call and report. Patch the balloon on 70 soundshits to each valve. City workers will then come and release the gas.
And George Adams, you're back, Andy Pop.
I have an idea. We have a man, we could have a manhole insert with the gas detector on the bottom and a water sensor on top. The gas pressure, in the valve middle, when the gas pressure builds up, the gas will be released. There's water being served, the gas will be released.
So, it's good. How much would that cost?
That's a good question. Let me see. That would cost about $2,000 for the gas detectors. Those would cost whatever supplies.
For each manhole insert, there's no way the sewer's gonna fit.
I have another idea. We can make an insert. There's strong flexible material. The gas, the small hole below, when the gas builds up, the hole will expand, letting the gas be absorbed.
After several other ideas, this idea eventually evolved into our team's solution.
Our team's solution was an innovative manhole insert.
The bottom half of the 36-inch boom and stretch across the circle, please, manhole grate.
Grading the loot is next. Tape around the edges using manhole sealing and repair tape.
Grading the balloon is next taped around the edges using manhole sealing and repair tape.
The grating placed the manhole insert on the hole at the bottom.
Does our solution meet restrictions in the park? Is it watertight or at least by an existing solution?
We tested our solution prototype. We did this by filling our manhole insert up with water and placing it on a bucket to see how much water got through in 25 hours.
After, we took off the insert and measured the water in the bucket. These were our results.
Our solution went in 3,840 gallons of water in 25 hours, compared to 10 gallons for other solutions and 300 to 7,500 for plain manhole cover.
Is our solution able to release gas?
Yes. Here's a balloon with one of the bands on its neck. The balloon is shrinking in size as the air is released.
Is our solution inexpensive?
Yes, we estimated that our solution would cost $30, $40. Will vehicles be able to drive over our solution and is compatible with new and old sewers?
Yes. The insert does this like this, a regular manhole cover, resting on top.
Does it have viable results?
Yes, we think it would. We shared our solution with family and friends, Bob Outbreak, a project director of Building Divisions and Housing Development, Rob Owens, a Public Works Director, and Kealan Yarborough, the City of Kingman superintendent of wastewater treatment plant. Here's a list of our sources. Any questions?
When is the city going to install them?
Right.
Very nice presentation.
So how, how did you select this particular subject?
After we went to see one of the sites, they were talking about how it kept on filling up because of water. So we decided to research it and then we helped us.
What a great idea. What a great job you guys have done. That's really a good presentation. Thank you. Does the idea have merit? That's great. That's great to be so innovative and creative like that.
Yeah, I think it's all about coming up with creative solutions to solve some of these practical problems and thank you so much for coming and sharing this with the city. I think it's an awesome idea.
Could you kindly tell us what your next step is with this presentation? Where you're going to a competition or have you already been or?
So they competed in a qualifying regional in Flagstaff. They are FLL tournaments all over the state and all over the world actually, but we competed in Flagstaff. And they were selected as one of the top nine teams to travel on to the state tournament. And on January 13th and 14th, they'll be holding two Arizona State FLL tournaments. And so we'll be competing on the 14th. And then if they do well enough there, if they're the top, top winner, they'll be going to the World Championships in April in Houston. So that's, that's the long-term goal. We'll see what happens. And then my, my personal long, long-term goal is for them to then step up to the FRC, the High School Robotics Team. So they're innovators and they're wonderful, brilliant kids.
Absolutely. Would you kindly keep us informed how, how we do? I mean, you're already winners as far as I'm concerned. What a great job.
And if I could, I, I have a little DVD that one of the parents made up. It gives a little more breadth to the, what you see here. It's a pretty full program. So at your convenience, you could watch it if you care to.
Great. Thank you so much.
Best of luck at your competition and go show those other kids what Kingman can bring, right?
Thank you.
Get a patent. Get a patent on your design.
Thank you. All right, while they're dissembling. Item number four is call to the public comments from the public. Those wishing to address the council should fill out request forms in advance. Action taken as a result of public comments will be limited to directing staff to study the matter or rescheduling the matter for consideration and decision at a later time. Comments from the public will be restricted to items not on the agenda, with the exception of those on the consent agenda. There will be no comments allowed that advertise for a particular person or group. Comments should be limited to no longer than three minutes. I, I don't have anyone that has signed up to address the council. Is there anyone in the audience that wishes to address the council at this time? Okay, seeing none. We will, we'll move on to the consent agenda. All matters listed here are considered to be routine by the city council and will be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items. If discussion is desired, that item will be removed from the consent agenda and will be considered separately. Does any member of council wish to have something removed from the consent?
I would like to have item C removed, please.
Item C. Anything else? Seeing none, all entertain a motion to approve consent agenda as presented with the exception of item C.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Now, item C. Street sweeper rebuild. The street division's fleet of street sweepers has an average age of 14 years and many hours of use. The streets division obtained a proposal from Norwood Equipment Incorporated to complete a rebuild of one sweeper. This proposal was obtained utilizing Maricopa County Cooperative Contract Number 15021C. This rebuild will reduce downtime and maintenance needs for the sweeper that is rebuilt. This rebuild will be approximately 30% of the cost of a new unit. Staff recommends approval of the attached job order proposal from Norwood Equipment Incorporated and authorizing the mayor to sign on behalf of the city. Good evening. Thank you for El Trovator. Amazing.
Great, thank you.
Can you tell me how many street sweepers we have now?
Currently, we have four in our fleet. Those aren't running altogether at any particular time unless we're doing a pavement preservation project mainly chip seal and then also during storm cleanup. And I apologize, I don't remember the specific each model with, or each unit number, what their age is. But I think the average age in there was about 14 years. And the main reason that we don't run off for it one time is staff.
It, it, it's always kind of confused me when I'm behind a street sweeper and it just doesn't appear like there's much to sweep.
So part of it is, is keeping up on, on maintenance is with anything. Vacuuming your carpets is easier when you have less debris or material to vacuum up. And same way with a sweeper. We try to stay on a proactive schedule and, and take care of regular sweeping. But with the number of lane miles that we have to sweep and the number of sweepers we have running at any given time, sometimes that difficult is difficult. So areas of higher traffic arterials and collectors mainly get more sweeping and then we break into the neighborhoods and try and take care of those. And some areas have less than others. Some are, are very dirty depending on how long it's been and, and you know, drainage and a whole number of other factors that are included.
Thank you.
Does that answer your question? Any other questions or staff? Okay, hearing none, I'll entertain a motion regarding item C on the consent agenda.
I'll make a motion to approve item C on the consent agenda.
I second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor? Aye. Any opposed? There's no old business to discuss this evening, so we'll move on to item seven under new business. A modification of City Code, Art, City Code Article 4 Municipal Court, Section 2-71 City Magistrate. The City Code only allows for a two-year term. Staff has prepared an amendment to the City Code to allow for a term of not less than two years and no more than six years. Staff recommends adoption of Ordinance Number 1847. Who's taking this?
I'll take this. This came out of, I think, your discussion when you renewed the magistrate's contract the last go-around. And obviously the statute only, or the ordinance only allowed for the two years. This just gives you a little more options there. But there is a minimum based on the court orders out of the Supreme Court that says it has to be at least two. So this, like I say, just gives you that option to, to expand it if you want to.
Okay, and thank you very much. Any, any questions of staff?
I think this is something that, more of a, almost a housekeeping item, if you will.
It's just housekeeping.
We discussed this a while back. If there's any, no discussion, I'll entertain a motion to approve.
I move.
Go ahead.
Move that we adopt ordinance number 1847.
I'll second.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Thank you. Moving on to item 7B, public hearing and consideration of Ordinance Number 1843, amending Section 16-000 Light Industry, I, I-1 of the zoning ordinance of City of Kingman to allow tattoo shops by conditional use permit. Michelle Perry, applicant, has requested a text amendment to Section 16, Light Industry of the zoning ordinance of the City of Kingman to allow a tattoo shop to be added to the list of uses which may be permitted by a conditional use permit. Subsection 16-230, uses which may be permitted by conditional use permit lists uses that may be considered in the I-1 zoning district subject to obtaining a CUP as specified in Section 29, Conditional Use Permits. The Planning and Zoning Commission voted 7 to 0 to recommend adding tattoo shops to the list of uses that may be permitted by CUP as stated in Attachment A of Ordinance Number 1843. Staff recommends approval.
Good evening, mayor, members of the council. This is a text amendment to zoning, the zoning ordinance to allow tattoo shops by conditional use permit in the I-1 zoning district. The applicant is Michelle Perry and recommendation is to approve Ordinance 1843. Currently, tattoo parlors are permitted to uses in the C-2 and C-3 zoning districts. But they are not specifically listed in the I-1 either as permitted uses or by conditional use permit. The applicant is interested in locating a tattoo shop on property that is currently zoned I-1, that is adjacent to an existing motorcycle and auto repair business. There's a wide variety of manufacturing and processing uses, vehicle and truck repair, outside storage, research and development, and utility uses that are permitted by right in I-1. Uses allowed by conditional use permit include a mix of service uses, heavier industrial uses. Other items include motels, recreational fitness uses, restaurants, sexually-oriented businesses, and swap meets. Tattoo shop may be more harmonious with permitted uses in I-1, such as an auto motorcycle shop than maybe some other uses that we've mentioned, including this fitness center, motel, or restaurant. So after reviewing this, taking into the Planning and Zoning Commission, there was no objection to adding tattoo shops by conditional use permit in the I-1 district. This will still allow the Planning and Zoning Commission and the council to consider the specific locational issues that there may, that may arise with locating a tattoo shop in the I-1 on a case-by-case basis. So the commission voted 7 to 0 to recommend approval of the text amendment as shown in Attachment A. And with that, I can try answering any questions you may have.
Thank you very much. Light industrial is obviously less restrictive than what it's currently permitted in. So this, to me, shouldn't be difficult. You didn't have anyone voice any objections to this request? Okay, thank you. Other questions of staff? Does the applicant wish to address the council on this item? All right.
I don't know if they're here tonight.
Okay, thank you very much. Does anyone in the audience wish to address the council on this item? Seeing none, we'll go ahead and entertain a motion.
Was that, did that consider, was that considered the public hearing? Because it is a public hearing item.
Well, I just asked.
I know, I know. I was just verifying.
Is that good, good for you? Okay. Okay?
I will move that we approve the CUP or the, oh, sorry. The ordinance number, yes, thank you.
Ordinance number, we have a motion to approve ordinance, okay, thank you.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Thank you. Motion passes. Item C, public hearing and consideration of Ordinance Number 1844, amending Section 25 Sign Code of the zoning ordinance of Kingman, City of Kingman to allow, remove, I don't want to get that, remove the requirement that double-faced signs be not less than 30 inches apart and adding a definition and regulations for signs in commercial subdivisions. Ventura Hotels DBA Homes to Suites by Hilton applicant desires to construct a 70-foot-tall on-premise freestanding LED display sign with two parallel signs facing over seven feet apart in the C-3. The applicant has requested consideration of a text amendment to Section 25 Sign Code of the zoning ordinance of the City of Kingman to remove the requirement that double-faced signs not be less than 30 inches apart for purposes of calculating the sign area and to increase the allowable height of signs located in the interstate corridor from 40 feet to 60 feet above the highest point of the finished grade of the interstate. Staff and Planning and Zoning Commission recommend approval of Ordinance Number 1844.
Madam Mayor, I'm going to be recusing myself from this item.
Would you mind stopping today? Thank you very much.
Good evening again.
Let, let the record reflect that Councilmember Lincoln Felter is not participating in this item. Thank you.
Good evening again, mayor and members of the council. This is the zoning ordinance text amendment concerning Section 25 Sign Code. The applicant is Jason Moore, Vice President of Ventura Hotels, otherwise known as Home to Suites by Hilton, and requests is to remove the requirement that double-faced signs not be more than 30 inches apart for purposes of calculating the sign area and also to increase the allowable height of signs in the interstate corridor from 40 feet to 60 feet above the finished grade of the interstate. The recommendation is to approve Ordinance 1844. Home to Suites by Hilton would like to construct a 70-foot-tall on-premise freestanding double-faced sign on their property at 1121 East Sunrise Avenue. The sign will feature a LED display. This is where the new Home to Suites is being constructed currently, next to the freeway. The sign will be located in the interstate corridor in the C-3 district. The applicant wishes to advertise the hotel as well, as well as other future businesses within the same commercial subdivision. They would also like to advertise non-commercial city and local events. Only one sign face is calculated for double-faced signs that are parallel with each other and no more than 30 inches apart and enclosed within the sign structure. In this case, the faces will be parallel, but they will be over 70 feet apart due to the size of the structure. Therefore, a text amendment has been requested to remove the 30-inch distance requirement between the faces. Signs also may be currently 40 feet above the highest point of the interchange within, what is defined as the interstate corridor. The proposed sign location is 15 feet below the highest point of the grade of the interchange. So you would, that would, in that case, would allow a 15, 55-foot-tall sign. However, the applicant wishes to construct a 70-foot-tall sign. Therefore, the text amendment has been requested. This is what the sign would, is proposed to look like with the LED display below the sign itself. Whether they are, whether, what they are planning and doing is repurposing, removing a sign that's already in New Mexico, removing it to the site and reconstructing it as, as shown here. The sign would be located on northeast corner of the property where the hotel is currently being constructed, shown here on this map with the two stars. This map shows the interstate corridor, that's the area in, that's outlined in red, within 1,000 feet of the interstate right-of-way, which is the green lines, and extending 3,000 feet either side of the center line of Stockton Hill Road. So within this area, signs are permitted currently to be 40 feet above the finished grade of the highest point of the interchange. In this particular situation, the highest point of the interchange is, is at the western edge of the, of the interchange. The applicant is also requesting the ability to advertise other businesses within the Sunrise Business Park commercial subdivision that this lies within. Currently, Sign Code has definitions for signs in shopping centers, which allows advertising of multiple uses and businesses on a single sign in a shopping center. However, this location does not meet the definition of a shopping center. So staff developed a separate definition for signs in commercial subdivisions to address this issue. We analyzed each of the three issues raised by this proposed text amendment. First, it has to do with the calculation of the sign faces. We looked at ordinances in other jurisdictions. Typically, one side of a double-faced sign is calculated as long as the signs are, bases are parallel in other jurisdictions. So there's no, typically no maximum distance between the signs that's been required. Taking a look at that, there's no objection to removing this requirement as long as each sign face is actually parallel with each other and not at an angle. The maximum height for signs, as I mentioned, in the interstate corridor is 40 feet above the grade of the highest point of the interchange. And depending on the height or the elevation differential between where the sign is And depending on the height or the elevation differential between where the sign is located relative to the high point of the interchange, the sign height can vary significantly in the corridor. The request would increase the allowable height throughout the interstate corridor by twenty feet. Staff and the commission raised concerns over having more tall signs in the interstate corridor, and as a result of that discussion, the recommendation, the Planning and Zoning Commission and staff is to narrow that only, to only those signs that are defined as being within commercial subdivisions. So, only those specifics locations would be potentially allowable for a higher sign that would be sixty feet above the highest point of the interchange. The definition for shopping center, as I mentioned, does not fit the development arrangement for Sunrise Business Park, so the staff drafted a new definition for commercial subdivision regulations, and for regulations for signs in those subdivisions. A commercial subdivision is proposed to be defined as having ten or more acres with commercially zoned lots that are created by a plat. One freestanding sign would be allowed to, in the commercial subdivision, that would advertise all businesses within the subdivision. So, there'd be a single sign, and then all the other signs within that subdivision would only be able to advertise the use on that specific lot, and all of those signs would not be allowed to be taller than forty feet, even if they were located within the interstate All signs would also be allowed to be square feet per linear street frontage up to maximum three hundred square feet in size, and that is our normal standard for all commercial signs in Kingman. And the rest of the ordinance just essentially reiterates the standards for signs in shopping centers. One is to allow individual monument signs, five feet in height, fifty square feet in area where you have a individual building pad that's separated from the main portion of the lot or parcel. That would be allowed, and also canopy signs, if you have a canopy outside the building, you could have a small canopy sign underneath the pedestrian walkway. So, again, the Planning and Zoning Commission's recommendation is for the text amendment shown in attachment A. Staff is recommending approval of ordinance eighteen forty-four, and this is the proposed wording. New language is added in blue, so we added the definition for commercial subdivision, removed the statement about the thirty inches apart for the parallel, parallel sign faces as long as they are attached to the same structure, and then developed the new standard for signs in commercial subdivisions, which would allow the single taller sign in that case with, in the, than the lots within the subdivision where it'll be allowed to have smaller forty-foot tall signs. With that, I'll try and answer any questions you may have.
Thank you. Could you please tell me where we would find other commercial subdivisions along the interstate in Kingman?
Well, currently, the areas around Andy Devine and Beale Street are both subdivided and have, and are commercially zoned, for the most part, near the interchange.
So, they meet the criteria of this amendment, and we could possibly anticipate other applicants asking for signs of this height?
They may meet the criteria, but keep in mind, all the other businesses within the, within whatever you, whatever you define as being the subdivision, those businesses cannot already have a taller sign. They cannot already have a freeway-style sign, they can only have the forty-foot tall sign on the property. So, if, for example, there was interest in having a tall sign near the Andy Devine interchange, you have a number of very tall signs already that, in that area, that already are above the forty-foot elevation, so that area may not, may not meet the criteria.
I'm not sure what you mean by "may not." How would?
Well, I think, in order for this to, to meet the standard that's, or the, the language of this text amendment, you would have to have a, an area defined within a subdivision where you have a single taller sixty-foot above the interstate sign and a series of smaller forty-foot tall signs. In most cases, both at the Beale Street exit and also Andy Devine, you already have a, a large number of tall signs, so I don't know that, unless they were all willing to bring their signs down in height, I don't know that you'd be able to meet that. And at the Stockton Hill Road interchange, you do have, on all four corners, commercially developed property, but there is only one recorded subdivision in that area, and that is the one we're talking about. All the other property is unsubdivided property, or in the case of where the shopping center is for the Ross and Petco and PetSmart, that is a subdivision, but they are subject to the shopping center sign regulations. It wouldn't be subject to this. So, I think it's pretty limited.
But that's, I, I just want to make sure that we're not adopting something that could be subject to interpretation.
I understand, I agree.
Thank you. Other questions of staff?
How many, what kind of feedback did you get to the sixty-feet-high sign?
The only real feedback we got was, was from the Planning and Zoning Commission itself. We didn't, we weren't required to advertise specifically this area because this applies to any property that would meet the criteria, and you're not approving this specific sign tonight. It would be administrative. So, we didn't.
Right.
We didn't get comments from neighboring property owners or anything like that. The commission raised some concerns. They didn't want to see a lot of these types of signs happen all over, but I think they are satisfied that this ordinance was narrowly tailored at the, by the time we left the meeting, that they were satisfied that it met their concerns.
I, I've got to be honest, that I have a lot of concerns about the sixty-foot-high sign. The rest of the ordinance, I'm, I'm good with, but that sixty feet, I, I just don't think that, once we allow that to happen once, that, why wouldn't McDonald's, all of those retail and fast food chains ask for the same thing? The ordinance is good, but I don't like the sixty-feet-high sign.
Was there any specific discussion on that maximum height?
There was. One of the questions the commission had is, is why seventy feet? It's, again, my, my understanding is that this is because it's an existing sign that they are moving to the site, and it's already that high.
So, this is an accommodation, if you will?
I guess you could call it that, yeah.
Okay, okay. Well, I'm just trying to figure out how we got to that high.
Yeah, that's my understanding.
Because that's going to kind of dwarf some of the signs in the area, will it not?
It will be taller than some of the signs in the area, although we do have some signs that are taller than this in the interstate corridor because of the elevation difference. One that comes to mind is the Blue Beacon sign, which I believe is seventy-four feet tall.
Okay, thank you very much. Question?
Well, because I was sitting there during this discussion, I, I think it's important to know, they discussed this for quite a while, and did raise a number of issues, and I think they very much liked the idea that the sign was being repurposed, and also, while, I guess we can't hold anybody to it, the intent, as described by the business people, included a very welcoming, like, welcome to Kingman type of approach, and made it something of a marketing piece, including a digital sign that would market events for the city and things of that nature. And I think that was compelling to the commission, and certainly, it still is to me. Like everyone, I questioned, and as PNC did, questioned the height, but when we understood the intent and the, the way that it is going to be used, and also, in this location, that there's a large hotel that, if you're in the residential area, will block, you know, a lot of that view, there was just a lot of discussion, and in the end, I came down thinking, well, I think that they're trying to be business-friendly here, and I appreciate that, and, and that's where the commission fell too.
Thank you. Other questions or comments?
I just had a question, and just for, just for clarification.
Sure.
In that area, with this sign that's sixty feet tall, other signs can't just pop up that high? The requirement would be that the, any other signs would be forty?
That's, within the subdivision, that this would be the only tall sign, everything else would be forty feet tall, and under the current ordinance, every one of the lots in that subdivision could potentially have a taller sign, not seventy feet, but they could have fifty-five, fifty, sixty-foot-tall signs.
Right.
Other questions?
I guess, just a general question. What is the height for the City of Kingman sign height? Or does it vary?
Outside the interstate corridor, forty feet is the maximum height in C two and C three zone areas.
Okay. Other questions at staff?
And the, in a, in the retail shopping district, is there a height limit on that, on those types of areas?
If they're in, in the interstate corridor, they can be forty feet above the highest point of the interchange currently.
Okay, same.
Otherwise, forty feet.
Does the, thank you very much.
Sure.
We may have more questions. Does the applicant wish to address the council this evening? Please state your name for the record.
Michael Carnell. Madam Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of council, thank you for taking some time to listen to our proposal tonight. I don't have anything really to add to what was spoken about that sign here today, but I'd be happy to answer any questions. As far as the repurposing of the sign, it's the metal and it's the framing that we're repurposing. All the, all the LED and the signs themselves will be brand-new, so they'll be up to current codes and specs as far as usage of electricity and that kind of stuff. We also, I think, we spoke at the Planning and Zoning meeting a couple of weeks ago regarding what our vision is there, and it is, include a component that would, that would, I think, would benefit the city quite a bit. We've already seen two great examples of that here this evening. One, the young scientists that were here, that would have been a great thing to advertise or, or not advertise, but to speak to them and encourage them, and it's things like that that we had proposed for the city. Andy Devine days, I think that's the lot, the list is long, and, and with the sign that's going over the, the street, without singling any particular business, we could also include some language in our sign that would talk about inviting people to, to stop at Beale Street and look at the historic part of, of Kingman and some of the things that are to offer. The traffic is really out on the interstate. I mean, in my opinion, I'm not a traffic counter, but I think it just makes pretty good sense that the, the traffic is out on the interstate, so if we could get to fifty or sixty thousand cars a day and plant that seed to stop in Kingman, whether it's now or the next time through, it's a great opportunity for all of us. That's right, and we'll also serve two hotels, which, you know, my, myself and my investment team, we're making a significant investment here in Kingman. We are investing thirty million dollars in hotels in the next year and a half. We should be open at the Hilton Home Two mid-March. So, the sign actually is, it creates revenue, and I said this at, at the meeting, we have to have revenue, we have to pay the bank back. Mahavi wants their money, my investors want their money, Hilton wants their money, everybody knows that story. So, we have to have that, but I think that there's a, there's, there's some payback that we can give to, to the city, so, and I think we can provide that with the sign. And the sign is going to serve two hotels there. I just want to make that clear, so.
Sir?
I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Yes, is that a proposal that is in writing, or would you be willing to put that in writing?
The, the proposal regarding?
Regarding of doing promotion or advertising for the City of Kingman?
Sure, yeah, I think it's a great idea. We can sit down and discuss it. Kim is with, with YESCO, and, and this stuff, although it kind of looks new, and it is new, and it's, but it's been around a long time, there's some, there's some things about how fast, how fast people are traveling, how much time they have on the sign, is it an eight-second blurb? You know, there's, there's, there's a science to it, believe it or not.
Right.
So, I think we can work with YESCO. Kim here is with YESCO as well, to answer any technical questions, but certainly, we could, like to sit down with the staff or the attorneys or whoever and go through that.
If, if I turn my mic on. If you'd be willing to meet with Rich, or those of our planning staff, there, and develop at least a draft of the letter that we could then circulate to the council, that would be appreciated.
Be happy to do that.
Thank you.
Any other technical questions or?
Questions? Phenomenal work so far. The building looks really, really fantastic. Just wanted to tell you.
We like Kingman, and we, we're not from here, but we, we want to be from here. We want to give back to the community, and I think this would be a great way to do it.
Thank you very much. Any other questions of the sign company or the applicant? Thank you very much. Does anyone, yes?
My name is Kimberly Ubers. I'm a government relations specialist with YESCO, and I took special interest in Ms. Cressis' comments earlier, concerns about the height of this proposal. I take, I'm not a salesman. Like I said, I'm a government relations specialist. I can tell you, just based on my observations of this site, and looking at it from various angles, that there are some concerns with regard to visibility of this particular property and the, and the placement of a sign on it. That, that actually kind of set it apart, might be shared for people over on the east side as well, but anyone traveling west on the forty, coming from the east, heading west towards that property, they hit a rise in a much higher.
They do.
Level. If this sign isn't as high as we're proposing right now, we've got a whole, sorry, a whole avenue of travelers that are heading east that will not be able to see the, see the exit for that property in time to make the exit ramp itself. They'll just keep on going down, which means they'll have to turn around, you know, two miles back, or just say, I'll just find the next place that looks, that looks good. Also, with regard to the number of opportunities that might exist for other properties to develop a sign this large, I'm not sure how many actually would have the acreage, because it needs to be ten acres for anyone to be considered for a sign of this site and to be considered a commercial property within the new code that's being, code language that's being considered. So, it's very exciting for us to be able to take an existing sign and repurpose it on another property. We have signed Fanatics, I almost broke my neck downtown, looking at Beale Street on the way here. I'll be going back through it on the way back and taking photographs, so good luck to me, but, but this is one of those kind of signs that, that might become iconic in the future.
I, I think, based on the clarification by Vice Mayor Miles, and the applicant and willing to promote Kingman events, that probably, and you're right about the angles and the hills and the valleys, I think that probably takes away all of my concerns.
Appreciate that. Thank you for allowing me. Anyone have any questions?
Any other questions? Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thanks for the clarification.
Does anyone in the audience wish to address, address the council on this item? Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing, and I'll entertain a motion.
Move that we adopt ordinance eighteen forty-four.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second, any discussion?
Can we amend the, or amend the motion to include contingent upon, contract with, contingent upon promotion of Kingman or Kingman events?
Can I jump in there? No, because this is just a text amendment to the ordinance. This is not directly, technically not directly related to, to this actual applicant. They're just.
I also have to mention that, you know, with the huge investment that they're putting into our community, if, if the principal is here saying, "We will do this," I think we will hold him to that, and can hold him to that.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you very much. Councilmember Lincoln Felter? Councilmember Lincoln Velter?
Item D, consideration of ordinance number 1845, amending section 4-15 subdivision of airspace of the subdivision ordinance of the City of Kingman by removing the requirement that condominiums be subject to subdivision approval. Rand Holquist, RLS applicant, has requested consideration of a text amendment to section 4-15 subdivisions of airspace of the subdivision ordinance of the City of Kingman to delete this section from the subdivision ordinance and instead process requests for condominiums as a site plan during the building permit review process. The Planning and Zoning Commission recommendation is reflected in ordinance number 1845. Staff recommends approval of ordinance number 1845.
Good evening again, mayor, members of the council. This is a text amendment to the subdivision ordinance. The applicant is Rand Holquist, and the request is to delete section 4.15 subdivisions of airspace and instead process requests for condominiums as a site plan during the building permit review process. Recommendation is to approve ordinance 1845. Currently, section 4.15 of the subdivision ordinance contains the adopted regulations for processing of a condominium. The intent of the subdivision ordinance is related to the subdivision of land, is not necessarily related to the subdivision of airspace, which is what a condominium is technically. The Arizona statute, section 33-1205, states that subdivision code shall not impose any requirement on a condominium that would not impose on a physically identical development under a different form of ownership. Example with that, that could be, say, a condominium versus an apartment complex. State statutes also do not require the processing of condos through the subdivision process. We found in doing our research, other jurisdictions such as Mojave County and the city of Phoenix have removed the processing of condominiums and conversions from their subdivision ordinances and instead processed them through the site plan review stage, review at the building permit stage. Developers are still required to record a condominium plat. The plat will need to be prepared by an Arizona registrant. Developer must also record any CCNRs and other documents recorded by state statutes prior to the issuance of a CVO associated with the building permit. Again, the applicant is Rand Holquist, and he's been preparing a commercial condominium conversion known as Tuscany Village Business Condominiums located at 810 Eastern Street. This is the northerly of the two commercial developments at eastern and southern cross from Monsoon Park. This is one that's not currently occupied. The processing of a condominium or conversion through the subdivision ordinance normally takes one to two years, from the preliminary plat approval to final plat recordation. Then there's another couple of months for the building permit review and site plan review process. Subdivision review process involves ensuring utilities, street improvements, and drainage requirements are met. In the case of a conversion, usually the building already exists, and much of this stuff has already been done. What hasn't been done can still be addressed at the building permit stage. As I mentioned, a new condominium could be processed more like an apartment complex or other commercial development that are physically similar. Staff did meet with other departments and discussed any issues that might arise with the elimination of the section. I believe that any issues can be resolved during the building permit process. And the result of this text amendment if approved, it would streamline the process by one to two years. On December 12th, 2017, the Planning and Zoning Commission votes seven to zero to recommend that condominiums not be subject to subdivision approval, but instead be reviewed as a site plan during the building permit review process. So staff is recommending approval of the text amendment as shown in ordinance 1845. And this is the section here, essentially in green, most of the ordinance has been deleted, most of the section, I should say, has been deleted. The language that's been added is just explaining that, that they do not need to be processed through the subdivision ordinance, but the developer would still be responsible for recording the plat and the other documents required by the state. And that would all have to adhere to the approved building permit and site plan for the condominium. And with that, I'll try answering any questions.
One quick one, that maybe I overlooked this. Where does, do you address the traffic impact analysis for condominiums? Is that addressed in here anywhere?
Well, a traffic impact analysis is usually addressed at the building permit stage.
Okay. So will be addressed?
It can be, yes.
Can be or will be?
Well, it will be. If it looks like it may require a traffic impact analysis, we would require it.
Thank you very much. Other questions of staff? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Anyone wish to address the council on this item? Yes, ma'am?
Questions?
Oh, thank you so much. Okay. Anybody have any questions of the applicant? Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing, entertain a motion.
I'd make a motion to approve ordinance number 1845.
I second that.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Thank you. Final item of the evening, request for public auction of parcel V1 EC1 at Kingman Airport and Industrial Park. This was a request for public auction.
Madam Mayor?
Yeah, that's been pulled. I was going to read it and then read the letter. Yeah. This was a request for parcel 1.71 acres and was appraised for $110,000. We received correspondence from the airport authority today from Bob Riley. I would like to request that the referenced item establishing a date for the public auction for parcel V1 EC1 be removed from tonight's agenda or postponed, whichever is appropriate. Thank you. I would say that I would like to hear a motion that we just remove it from the agenda. Is it okay?
Or you could just take the applicant's statement that you just read as withdrawal of the item.
Okay. So you don't need a motion?
I don't.
Okay. Thank you very much. Okay. Item eight, department reports.
No.
Okay. Wonderful. Item nine, announcements by mayor, council members, and city manager. I don't have anything this evening. I think the work session went well. Might need to work on the timing a little bit, but other than that, I think we err on the side of caution.
We did.
Okay. Thank you. Other announcements? Okay. Hearing none. Final item of the evening, council request for future work session agenda items and/or calendar adjustments. Anyone have anything?
I have, yes, I have two items, both I'd like for two weeks from today. One being the review of the updated appraisal of the parking lot at Third and Andy Devine, the city-owned parking lot, and the date for and process we're going to choose to go by for the auction of that parking lot, the pre-qualified applicants, bidders, how we want to go about the auction, conducting it via sealed bid or in a council meeting. The other item would be commissions, combination of, specifically, a combination of EDMC and TDC before those commissions recommend appointments to fill their vacancies, and possible airport advisory commission as part of transit advisory, and maybe make transit advisory and/or transit advisory, airport advisory commission, a monthly meeting rather than a quarterly meeting. And this would all, we'd want to do this all prior to council member Scott Staley's orientation or retreat for council, commission or committee members. And then because of those two items and the need to have them as early as I think we should, I'd like to move the fees discussion to the first meeting in February.
Oh, I see what you're doing. Okay.
One thing I need to add, too. You mentioned boards and commissions. I asked the city assistant to poll the council as to what boards and commissions you wanted to be on this upcoming year. And, you know, I was informed by legal counsel, in order to do that, we're going to have to make a bit of, an amendment as far as the year-long term. So I think we need to see that on an agenda as soon as possible, because we did try and accommodate the requests of the council members.
So are...
Thank you. I appreciate that. That was one thing I wanted to mention as well.
Let me respond to the mayor's point first. Staff is planning to do that and just take it directly to the business meeting rather than...
Thank you.
As it relates to the revisions to user fees, I asked Tina to come to the microphone because she can explain why we're doing it this way and then give you the choice of whether you want to keep doing it that way. So Tina?
Sure. So we're holding the public hearing on the revision of the user fees on February 6th. So we wanted to come back and have a very short work session, just kind of reminding you that it's coming to the table, coming for your decision on February 6th. If we postpone it, that would be that first meeting in February. I don't know if there'd be necessarily a reason for it at that point, but that's entirely up to you if you want to just remove it as a work session item completely and just hold the public hearing in February or keep it as is.
It's fine such as it is then. I don't see any other... Yeah. Maybe then moving the fees discussion, move the property for parks and flood control discussion to February.
That works for, that works?
Fine, doing that. The only other thing is the EDMC has already met and voted, I think unanimously, is that right?
It wasn't unanimous vote.
Yeah. Voted unanimously to merge the two commissions into one. And I think TDC is scheduled to be, huh? Thursday? This Thursday, and I would expect them to have a vote on that topic on Thursday, so...
They postponed it last month.
Yeah, I'm aware of that. So if they meet on Thursday and do the same thing that EDMC did, then I think that item would be met. And we just would proceed to bring a proposal to you about how to have an integrated commission, because that's what their joint recommendation would be. The Third and Andy Devine one, by doing what council member Yocum just suggested, we could put that into the January 16th meeting. So then the session on the 16th would be Third and Andy Devine, proposed provisions to user fees, I-11, Kingman, project manager. And actually, as I just sat here thinking about tonight, I'm okay scheduling the parks' flood control for two weeks from tonight. And if we run out of time, we push it into first meeting in February. Does that make sense to...
Yes.
So that, we're learning to guesstimate time for these items, right? So a week ago, we weren't sure that we could get five items taken care of in 90 minutes. And tonight, we found out we get five items in 65 minutes. So if council's amenable to that, that would be my suggestion is we add the Third and Andy Devine and the project, or the topic that gets dropped back two weeks from then, based on time, is the flood control.
Yes.
Another, do you have another request? And then councilmember Lincoln Velter?
Yes, Madam Mayor. Thank you. I don't, I'll leave it to Manager Bacon and staff, but I'd like to propose a future work session topic, which would be the substantial or comprehensive revision of our building and our zoning codes to reflect the goals in our general plan, to encourage mixed-use developments, things like that. I think that's worthy of discussion.
I also have an item, and I don't have a time for it, but some time ago, we discussed the residential street ordinances regarding parking and safety and things of that nature. I'd like to see that scheduled for some point in the future.
Any others? Clear? Anything's clear? Okay. I think that's it. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second?
All in favor? Aye. None opposed. Thank you all for coming this evening.